All right. Lord do this ask that you give us guidance and wisdom to get through our agenda tonight and do what is best for the city and help us all to be able to be agreeable. Your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I motion to approve the minutes? David?
Oh, second.
David and Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
We can approve the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the monthly bills?
My motion?
Rick?
I second.
And David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. We have no citizens. Do you have anything, Echo?
Uh, just to say that the city work crew did an amazing job on the magic tree and the tree lighting on Small Business Saturday was wonderful and thank you for all of that, for being such good sports about, especially them who was very cold and it was a cumbersome challenge, you know, it was a cumbersome thing to try to do, mhm, but it's, and it looks beautiful, so. Oh, and one more thing.
Okay.
Uh, we, for the Sentinel, we are doing a sunshine lawn training. It will be at ten in the morning, not one thirty, here in Edina, at the community center on December twenty ninth.
Oh, December twenty ninth?
I'm sorry, sorry, January twenty ninth, thank you, January twenty nine, at ten AM at the Knox County Community Center. This training will be anywhere from ninety minutes to two hours. Um, it should only be about ninety minutes, but we're giving a ninety or, you know, telling people up to two hours, just in case they come with questions or the Q and A goes long. Um, and then I will be sending around, um, requests to be added to everyone's next agenda with a letter to be read to all of the councils, hopefully in the area, and as an invitation, this is free to attend. Um, and if you have not been in any type of sunshine training, I highly recommend that you, um, take advantage of this since it'll be right here in our backyard, right here in Edina. We did, you know, we did one about two years ago, um, and I don't know when the next one will be, and it will be the Attorney General's office will be here, um, conducting it, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's, uh, if you know the rules, it's not that bad, but if you don't know them, you can get into trouble really fast.
As we've seen, we've had a lot of sunshine news lately, so let's make sure everybody knows
It's just a good thing to
how to avoid.
It's a good thing to go through.
And that's it.
Thank you, Echo. Martin and Tom? Or do you want to wait for Martin?
Um, I'm waiting for, give me another five minutes or so, we'll see if he doesn't show up or go ahead.
Peggy, do you want to go?
Sure. Well, I'm gonna take over in five minutes. I'm gonna have to interrupt. Do you need to wait for Mark? Are we gonna be able to do anything?
We have a form.
We have a form. Okay.
Yeah.
Let's start with the budget amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, but, oh, there's a copy here, maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you one.
That's okay, there's plenty.
We had a lot of amendments to share throughout the year. And the first three funds, it's not, or four funds, it's not much. But if you notice in our water and sewer and our sanitation, we went over in salaries and the company expenses, the FICA, the simple. You know, three of those funds. Landfill charges, Roger said, we're doing a lot more trash. Can you hear back there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know I don't talk very loud.
I can hear you.
Okay. So the landfill charges are more, but that's probably because we've got more trips
Yes.
is what's causing
Yes.
more expense.
Yes, it is.
That's something we're gonna have to think about in the future. You know, a partial solution to that is the recycling, which we don't
We're working on that.
Good, which we don't have, because I know personally, it doubles what we have.
Yes. Yes, I've been in touch with I hope and we're working on something.
Very good. Very good. So hopefully we can get that back down, but now it's over. You have any questions on any of those?
None. On the trash truck, I'm gonna, we're gonna sit down together and we're gonna see if we can do a little bit better with that, so just so as y'all know, we're gonna, before long, me and Mark are die and we're gonna sit down and try to do this a little different to where we can take that one less turn if we can.
Take one less what?
Turn down, going that down.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna try to sort of help that a little bit.
But if we can get the recycling
Yeah.
worked out, that will also go.
That will help severely.
Yeah.
Severely.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Or you wanna just keep moving on?
Well.
Or what, we gotta approve these amendments?
I'm gonna recommend we approve them now, so we'll look at that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
I make the motion.
David? Is there a second? Scott? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Whenever Tom's ready, we'll take a pause, but
Okay, well, he went back outside.
Okay. Um, if you wanna move on, we'll start looking at the, um, budget.
Oh, you're there.
Okay.
Easy.
You guys wanna go ahead before you get to sit down and?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hello.
We're getting a couple new members on the fire department, and we don't have enough bunker gear to suit everybody up, or pagers, and was wanting to know if the city would help pay for it.
What, what we're gonna have to come up with, our part of, what we're gonna have to pay for nine thousand some odd dollars, uh, eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars is what we're gonna have to write a check for when we buy this stuff. We won't get reimbursed for that for four to six months, depending on how things roll around.
This is through the conservation?
This conservation grant. Our part, what we're gonna have to pay ourselves is forty-six-ten. It's out of our pocket. The conservation is gonna reimburse us for fifty percent of that. That's the total amount.
Now, that's the gear and the radios?
Right, three pagers, three pagers and two sets of turnout gear.
Well, that's a positive thing that you're getting new people.
Yes, because
Right, for sure, and
Because I'm not getting any younger.
And we've gotta have, say, we've gotta have the right gear for them. I mean, it's a liability to the city if we don't have the gear for them, so.
We really don't want people getting hurt.
No.
And we don't ask the city for a whole lot in a calendar year.
So the actual cost then to the fire department is gonna be four thousand six hundred and ten?
What we're gonna have to pay out of our pocket is four thousand, or forty, forty-six-ten, total amount, extended amount.
Okay.
Yes. But we're gonna have to write a check when we buy this stuff for like eighty-seven hundred dollars.
Right.
And we don't get reimbursed for that.
Then eventually you'll get half back.
So what are you looking from us?
We would, I'd like to assume the city would pay for the turnout gear. Um, this liability, I mean, like I say, it's, it's not, it's not gaining us anything, I mean, and the pagers. We got three pagers that we need, we got two that we need to replace, well, one that we need to replace, and then we've got two others that need them.
Okay.
So we're asking the city for forty-six-ten, basically.
And when, when would you need it?
Well, whenever we get this, we better pay this before the twenty-first of February.
Okay.
It's gotta show proof of that, so we need it in the next, within the next sixty days.
Okay.
Thirty to sixty days, hopefully before, thirty days anyway, so we can get all this done and sent in certified, so.
So you mentioned you have a couple of new guys?
Mhm.
Okay.
They're bloated?
They're not on yet, they're not on yet, so.
They're walking out, so.
Okay, and
One of them's actually from north of us.
You mentioned something else that we hadn't talked about for the budget. What was that again?
On our, when they did the pump testing,
Okay.
they said there's a possibility that they may need to replace the seals. They tightened that one up as much, both of them as much as they can. It said probably in the next calendar year, when they do the pump testing, they're gonna have to replace the seals. And they will send us a bid and quote before that to see whether we wanna do one or two or whatever.
So that's the annual pump testing that's in the fall, I mean, this time, and we just got the invoice for this one?
Mhm, right.
Okay.
So when you get that quote, can you pass that on to Mark?
And I don't know whether, maybe I can get it ahead of time, maybe I can go ahead and say, hey, what, what are you looking at on this, and maybe we can get something ahead of time so we know what we're looking at, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, for budget purposes, I think they will surely tell you what they think.
I've got the guy's number, I can call in and see.
Okay.
Can you give us an idea what that's gonna run?
I can, let's have some quarter of us, what pumps do they inspect over here?
This is the fire pumps, the pumps that are on the trucks.
Okay.
Those, those two pumper trucks?
We've got, and Margaret's got a copy of our
I thought that's what we were talking about.
That's okay, Margaret's got a copy of our pump testing, and I've got a copy of it too, that we keep on record so that we can show for
And that's one of those things that's very important to have done with, for our fire.
Yearly, if you get that done yearly?
Yes.
Make sure it's on their ISO rating.
ISO rating lowered.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Do we have the money in the budget this to, I guess, what's the process we need to do now?
Well, as we approve the budget, we'll probably just go ahead and
Put that in there?
Put that in.
Okay. So, but then thirty days would be, so maybe by our next meeting?
Thirty days, yeah, that'd be great, yeah, that, that way we can get it all done through before the February deadline.
Yeah, give you thirty days to get it done.
Everything's gotta be certified and sent in, and we gotta have tickets paid and proof of all this stuff, and that takes a little while to get all that stuff done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we'll see if we can't get that in the budget for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
So both things, one thing?
The
They haven't said yet.
Well, we don't have an amount on the one.
We're just talking about turnout here.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the forty-six hundred.
Right.
They haven't voted on that.
Well, we'll discuss that when we get into the budget part, if that's okay?
Okay.
Will that work?
Okay, and then the other couple of thousand, or put it for the, the other, you'll wait, you get it?
We'll have to wait.
Right, and I'll try to get a price on that, maybe we can get an idea till we got something we can plug into the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Appreciate your coming.
I'll come back tomorrow.
That helps.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the time.
Oh, great.
Okay. You ready to start through the budget? I'm gonna hit the highlights and change and
All right.
Night, gentlemen. See you, gentlemen.
So a lot of it's, it's routine, you know, comparing what we spent in the past and taking into account increases, because everything is costing more. Um, but the things that are different, I kinda discussed in the, in the budget overview at the beginning. So as far as revenues go, um, they're, they're pretty consistent. We've applied for the demolition grant, it is not in the budget because we don't know yet, but we've been approved, so when that happens, we'll have to approve the income and the
Yeah, ongoing.
expenses to go with that.
Okay.
But otherwise, your revenues are, are pretty consistent. As far as expenditure goes, we did the final, uh, ARPA fund expenditures in twenty-twenty-four, so that was completed. In the street fund, we have a total budgeted between the street fund and the transportation tax fund of a hundred and thirty-eight, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, so, um, they've been getting a significant amount done and doing a good job with all of that, so I think that helps. The transportation tax, we couldn't have done it without it. It's really made a difference. Gives us the money to buy the materials. The special light fund, we have been transferring ten thousand dollars a year from the general fund because we, what's coming in from our taxes for the streetlight fund is not adequate to pay the streetlights, and that's all that's coming out of there is the streetlights. Um, so we may need to start looking at the process to increase that tax in order to break it even every year. We were hoping the LED bulbs and replacing those would make enough difference that we wouldn't have to do that, but I think we probably need to evaluate that this year, because we've done that for about five years now, so it's probably time we do something. The recreation fund, that's what the cigarette tax goes to, and that's the main revenue there, so it, um, is not adequate to do what we're doing. You know, we've talked about doing the country club, and that revenue, if it comes in, would go through that fund, so. Otherwise, the expenses that are out of there are gonna have to be paid from the general fund. Once it's gone, then we can use the general fund. Proprietary fund. Okay, so we've got two groups of funds, and when you look at those on page five, the ones on the top are governmental funds, which are taxes. And what did you think about it?
I, yeah, but I haven't even been home yet, my packet's still here, so thank you.
So she don't feel like you're in the dark.
Cheating and looking on yours.
Well, that's okay. So some of the changes that we have in the water fund, we've added a cell phone, and we're adding the cell phone, so that's about a thousand dollars a year, it's not that much, but that's increasing our utilities. Um, the water usage charge from Clarence Cannon Water Supply District increased late in twenty-twenty-four, so that's gonna be higher. In the sewer fund, an additional three thousand dollars has been budgeted for maintenance, repair, uh, for the replacement of lab supplies, a printer, and the purchase of a magnet for lifting the navel, uh, rings. Again, that's kind of a safety thing, so our crew doesn't get hurt. Sanitation fund. And Roger, I'll let you talk about that a little bit more, as far as why we're doing the trash truck early, because the cost is going up significantly?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna talk about it right now?
Uh, no, but you might address it.
Okay, I will.
So that they'll kinda know why we're bumping it up.
I'll bring it up.
I appreciate that. So we do have the funds available, so it has been budgeted for this year. Funds in general, salaries, we've included a minimal increase, and that's outlined later. And it's based on the current employees at the rate of increase that is being indicated. It's not allowed all the time for our current employees or all the other stuff, so if we do that, we're gonna have to adjust it. But what happened in twenty-twenty-four is our salaries are about thirty-six thousand dollars more than they were in twenty, in twenty-four, not much more than it was in twenty-three, which is almost a seventeen percent increase. So we're, we're gonna have to watch, watch salaries, or we're gonna have to find a way to come up with more funds. Starting on page two, we've got a list of all the things that have been requested for capital overhead. Our office computers are due for replacement, uh, which would be from the general fund. Under capital improvement fund, we've got a lot budgeted, but a lot of these things were carried over because we didn't spend them in twenty-four. So for instance, the police truck was budgeted last year, um, and we're looking at the grant for that, which we'll discuss later. Uh, we kinda separated it out, we budgeted thirty thousand last year, we put twenty-five for the truck, and we did five thousand dollars for equipment, because if they replace the truck, they're gonna have to do the bars and, you know, the additional equipment to put on it, so we separated that out. City hall. We're talking about tuck pointing, replacing the floor in the back, probably rock is all we're looking at there at this point, um, and the parking lot. Sidewalks were budgeted for twenty thousand dollars last year, we didn't spend that.
We will make sure that grant gets filled out this year.
Okay. Um, we had budgeted rock for the dam, and that was not done last year, so, uh, that's just kinda moved forward. Um, we had budgeted fifteen thousand for the country club last year, we didn't use that. So we have increased that to thirty thousand for this year, which Roger thought would probably pretty well do what needs to be done. Before we spend a great deal of money there, we need to check with DNR and make sure that
Yes.
we don't have to hook up to sewer.
Um, we're gonna, we can't open it to the public on a septic system.
That's what I thought.
It's gonna have to get hooked up to city sewer.
That's what I thought.
And Mo dot does, is on city sewer, didn't you say, Roger?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, somebody told me they were.
No, not yet.
Okay.
They're supposed to run it out there, I thought.
Year ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're a little behind, they're still toking up a year ago.
Several years.
So we kinda need to address that issue before we get a whole lot involved. If, you know, if we're using it for public use, we need to do what we need to do. We've talked about Fish for Lake, Fish for the Lake before, we hadn't done anything with it. One of the new items on there this year is our billing system. They more than doubled our cost for the software support this year, and we haven't been overly pleased with the support we've been getting.
Right.
So, um,
And we're not the only ones.
Right, a lot of the other cities, Margaret's been talking around with them, a lot of them are changing to a different system. I think probably their major market is not cities, and so that's kinda probably time we need to evaluate that and find somebody who's a little more dedicated to, to what our needs are. Because it seems like every time we call about anything anymore, it's, it's more money.
Yeah.
And
Yeah.
they want us to do this and that, so, we're estimating, um, it will be about twenty thousand, we put twenty-five in the budget, so that we're kinda prepared for whatever we need to do. And that's not gonna be a January thing, it's gonna be where she's gonna continue researching it, checking with the others, see what they're satisfied, what they're liking, and then we'll start evaluating other systems. But before this time next year, we'll probably have transitioned to something else. The next time, there's a park, just to paint the shelters and plant some trees. Roger may talk to you more about the sign covers, the stop signs that are fading out, want to put covers on those. More from the maintenance building, and then a grader for the skid steer, which you're Special Light Fund, we've been sending aside a thousand dollars for bulb replacement. We don't build, it must only be replaced, but it's there in case that happens. Water and sewer fund. The communication tower, if Mike was thinking, you see it underwater, you see it under sewer pipe, for the amounts would be needed for that. And that's probably something that's like, we need to be doing it right now.
Yes.
Uh, water line replacement's something that's been discussed also, and that's also, you know, between the water and the sewer. Meter supplies. They have some on hand, I think you've talked to them about this.
Yeah, we're running out of dollars.
So, um, kinda expect about six thousand dollars there. And that's probably something that needs to be a discussion on, as far as, is that something the city's gonna be paying, or is that something that's gonna be, you know, when you move the meter outside, is that something that we're gonna be going then for? Or is that something the city's assuming? Because I think at this point, the city's just been assuming that, so. Mike thought you might wanna have that discussion, but it's okay, uh, meter changeout, we're probably overdue for this, but we've been focused on getting the water tower painted and finished. And now that that's done, we need to get started on changing our meters out. We were kinda looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total, trying to divide it between five years so it doesn't hit all at once, so that would be thirty thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-five. In the sewer department, um, the communication tower, we talked about, the pump backup. And then we've talked about having a spare for the large pump. Because if it goes out, that's something that's not immediately accessible. We talked about putting some aside one year and some the next year, and that kinda stuff, but it's probably at the point you make that decision, but we may just wanna get it done, so I put the whole thing in the budget. And then there's the trash truck. For a hundred and thirty-eight thousand to replace the one we've got.
And of course, the trash truck, Roger probably has more to share about that as to why we would be budgeting now.
Yeah.
Don't we have it budgeted for like five years, every five years to?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
This is a little sooner than what we would have done, except, as Roger can tell you, the company contacted him and, and this gonna go sky high and
And availability.
Salesman, salesman contacted me, and he said, we have one that we're building right now. He said, all thirteen of you for this price, because he said, next year, they're gonna go up fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a truck. And then he said, if you can even get one by next year, on account of they're that far behind. That's why he gave us the price, and give it to him, Margaret has that.
This is the same guy we've worked with.
Is he gonna look at sort of like trade-in, what we're gonna get back out of the, the one we've gotten out, because it ain't even, it's like, what is it, three years?
That's with trade-in, the hundred and thirty-eight.
Yes.
We, we do have the money available. It's, it's pushing that fund a little bit, but we do have it available.
What year is that truck being in?
It was here a year or two before I came, so this would be its fourth year.
We've, yeah, I was gonna say.
It was after COVID.
It's, it's sooner than.
It's a year sooner.
Yes, a year sooner than what we would have raised, but Mark sent the information.
Yes.
Well, last time, we got a year sooner than, because we couldn't get them.
Yeah, because he said next year, he said, I'm not promising you, you can even get one. He said, this one here, if you all want to speak for it, that's why we're bringing that up now, we can get it. But next year, the fifteen to twenty thousand, he said, easily more, that's everything. So, that's scoop.
And it's the same guard each?
Yep.
We updated last time, we was up there to a bigger truck.
Are those, now that he's up here, we can see him face to face, are there any of those that you want to discuss with him while we're here?
Uh, the pump you were talking about, is that the one for Cotty Street?
I think so.
Well, that's a little pump on Cotty Street.
At six hundred and seventy dollars, and Mike said he's gonna order that tomorrow, he said, there's no getting around it.
We need one now.
They got it cleaned it today and he said, it's broke, he said, it's gone.
Yeah, there's two pumps in there and one of them is.
Toast.
Yeah.
And he's gotta order one tomorrow.
Because they're supposed to switch back and forth.
So, could we use it on a budget that we budgeted for this?
Okay.
Six hundred and seventy bucks, he told me to bring that in.
The large pump is the ones down at the.
Right, but just like, the other pump.
It's not, it's, it's only.
Is there another one that, that Mike was talking about?
Yes. That's out to the farm shop, they wanted an extra one, that's the big, that's the big one.
So.
Because we got a used pump in it that we put together.
Yes.
So, what's the?
We bought one new one up there.
Okay, so you're talking about the five thousand dollar one?
Yes, yes.
That's not the big one?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, the, the ones that came together is the one you talked to me about.
Yeah.
And the small one, like twenty-five hundred or something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the one they would need out here is six hundred and seventy bucks. That's for Cotty Street out here, that's what it is.
When do you expect that in? That'll be in January for that?
He ordered it tomorrow.
Okay.
So, I see, pretty quick.
Okay, that's more of a maintenance to.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because it's under a thousand.
But he wanted me to bring it up and tell you, oh, that's what was, he's, he's gotta get it, no, there's no more out.
Okay. Some of these items. What we normally do is we put them in the budget when they're requested, and then you all make the decision if that's what you want to do. When the time comes for that to happen, not necessarily approving it with the budget, just approving the budget to allow for it. This year, we have a number of items that are under three thousand dollars. I'm wondering about just approving anything under three hun, three thousand dollars that's in the budget this year with the budget. So, that would include the fish for the lake, it would include the, uh, park, painting the shelters and the trees. The stop sign covers, the roof on the maintenance building and the grader for the skid steer. Water line replacements at the water and the sewer department. And that way, when they get a chance to do it, they can just go ahead and do those smaller projects.
Yes.
So, the under three thousand, I'm just gonna recommend we go ahead and approve those. The other things that we'll probably need to have approved, you know, before January, are gonna be your communication tower stuff, right? Because we're needing to move forward on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Are these question, these communication towers, is this so we can do away with our AT&T?
It should go to the cellphone, all these were, forgot right now, they're going to AT&T, it should go to the cell towers, we should be able to.
Mike can better explain that.
Yeah.
You, you, you want to talk about it, Roger?
No, we'll let Mike explain it, because he, Michael, Michael is better than Mike, so.
If it's, if it's just for a little call-out thing, that's a lot of money. Uh, hopefully, it's gonna do away with the communication between the pump house and the tower.
I think it does.
I think that's.
Supposed to combine them all.
Yeah, I think it does, I think it does.
That's the main thing with.
Because when they redid the water tower, the communication things needed to be replaced also.
And that's AT&T that has those lines that are needing. Something different done.
I'm starting to replace this outline.
So, we may want to wait till he explains that further before we work on that one. So, what's the timeframe on the tech trash truck?
Uh, I haven't talked to him for a while, he may have put it here on this.
So, our trash truck is, the one we currently has is twenty twenty-two. And, and what Mark said was that, uh, the reason for the early quote is that, because the Allison transmission. It's currently used in the trucks that you order are in mass shortage, and what is available has been sold through twenty twenty-six. You know, that far ahead. So, in twenty twenty-seven, there's gonna be these new emission standards that will come out and the cost will go up, uh, like you said, fifteen to twenty percent. And then, we currently have a truck that's being built and, uh, since you purchase every five years. Uh, you would be money ahead to consider trading now and getting the new truck that we're building. And pass that along to Roger, as well as said.
They didn't give you a timeline of when it would be done?
It's getting, it's getting close, if I remember right, I think it was the end of the year. So, he's supposed to come back by, in the next week or two, so.
So, they're gonna approve it at the January meeting and would be okay, or you need to approve now?
I can find out by then, I'll give him a call.
Okay.
And of course, you know, the truck is two hundred and fifty-one thousand to begin with, but they allow a hundred and fourteen thousand for our trade-in.
Yeah, it's a good deal, really.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Especially when you know what's gonna happen if you get one.
Yeah.
Well, then.
Then when they go up, plus.
Every year you go on that truck, it's gonna get less and less on your trade-in.
On the trade-in, right.
Right.
But then on top of that, we'll have the increase.
Yeah, so do you need us to approve the expenditures under three thousand dollars now, or do you want to wait till the end?
With the budget.
Okay.
As long as everybody understands what is involved.
Okay.
I just think operations wise, it's gonna be easier for him to. You know, when he needs the fish, he can order the fish and get it and that kind of stuff. Same things with the maintenance, some of those are maintenance type issues that we've just kind of put on our capital outlay. Any other questions from Roger about any of those?
Stop sign covers, y'all never noticed, the stop signs are real dull, so you just get a cover and stick on it, you know, you don't have to buy another one. So, it's a lot cheaper, they're a lot brighter. They're pretty dull, if you get to looking at them.
They're just pretty stiff.
Some can't even tell what they are.
That's right.
Or one or two, but it's just.
Silver.
Yeah, silver, right. Maybe price them?
Huh?
Maybe price the sign?
Yeah.
Just save you about fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah, it sounds right, it's close to that.
Yep.
How much?
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Per sign?
No, all of it, for all, all thirty I need.
Is that in the budget? Yeah, that's in the budget, yeah.
Yep.
Anybody got any other questions about the budget?
No more questions specifically for the capital outlay, okay. Okay, I'm gonna touch on a few things, um, on page seven. All of the things that we had discussed, um, and you'll see we have a sheriff contracted services for forty thousand dollars. We had been discussing that over the last year and, um, I put it in the budget because we've discussed it. But as you can see, that's gonna put us in a bad place financially in that fund. Um, I'm not sure it's really advisable for, we're gonna have no additional benefit from that. They're not gonna assign somebody to the city. Compared to other cities, I don't think we found anybody our size that's doing anything like that. So, it's not common practice. If we had an abundance of funds, that would be a nice thing to do, but we really don't have that available. So, it's, it's your decision, but I'm not considering it a wise financial decision to make. And then the other adjustment we're gonna need to make, I'll, I'll leave that up to you, if you want on the budget, we can leave it in there, if not, we can approve the budget minus that. And then turn around and add to the fire department. We lost it, four thousand six hundred and ten dollars. Under capital outlay. And then, other than that, the, um. You know, as you look through the different funds, you can see that water, sewer, sanitation, the, the salaries jumped significantly from twenty-three to twenty-five. Our water usage charge went up in twenty twenty-four, so you'll see that amount is larger for next year. And our landfill charges are higher, but we've discussed that, so hopefully, we can get it back down, but for now, I've budgeted those for, for the higher amount. Other than that, unless you have questions, I think those are the main changes that I wanted to point out to you.
So, any more discussion with the budget? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the budget with all expenditures under three thousand dollars to be used as they need them.
So, what about, let's just talk about, like, in the general fund or something like?
Yeah, and then the two adjustments to the general fund will be. The sheriff's contract, maybe eliminating that.
Eliminate that one and then.
Add the four thousand, six hundred and ten.
Fire department.
I talked with Carl, um, the agreement with that. There's just him and another deputy right now, and he said, there is no way he can dedicate someone to the city moments. And he said, even if they were full-staffed, he could not do that, so. To hand them over that much money, we're not gonna get anything more for it than what we're getting right now. He said, that's just not, not an option.
So, there's always a possibility, somebody might move to town who wants to.
Even part-time.
Yeah.
And to, to me, you would get into the tax thing, the sheriff is being paid by county tax dollars. So, then we would be giving them city tax dollars on top of county tax dollars, so I don't know. Like, it's kind of a gray area, is that legal, is that right, is that kind of that gray area probably ought to stay out of? Because we're paying them extra to do what they're already getting paid to do. And getting nothing extra in return. My thought is, let's, let's just hold on to what money we have left out of that and add in the four thousand six hundred and ten for the fire department and. See if someone comes along to work part-time.
Address it at that time?
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the budget with the amendments and approving expenditures under three thousand?
Now motion.
Rick?
I'll second it.
Stacy? All in favor?
Mine.
Budget is approved. Roger? Good.
That was a new truck working out.
It's a lot different. I don't even have to take my phone out of my, I can get this phone, because the phone's all hooked up to it, I just.
Oh, you're just, you're getting lazy now.
No, I just, I don't have to fumble around for my phone, it's a lot better. That, I didn't know it had that, that's nice, where my truck has it.
Already lost some of your help?
Yeah.
I thought we just hired him.
We did.
Yeah, we lost more of them.
And what's this pipe that hurt?
Steel pipe over here at the East Morgan at fifteen, sliced his tire, and he thought he'd be here tonight. Yeah.
So, that would be when he turned.
Yeah.
West?
Uh, east.
East. I guess anyway, southwest morning.
Yeah, he ruined his tire, and I thought he was gonna be a parent, ask to see if, uh, we're gonna get a new tire or not, so. So, with that being said, we've got the grades out and we're on next warm day. We're gonna try to put grades on all the corners of them and be done with it.
Back to the tire.
Yeah.
You're going entirely too fast for me.
Yeah.
He was in and I told him absolutely yes, submit his bill. For his tire, whatever. He said, it's gonna be a hundred or less or something, but, but he said he had talked to you and you confirmed that, yeah, that it was something we were gonna take care of.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
You're fixing the problem, so we won't have this do it to anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good.
So, you're still ditching?
Mm-hmm. Did some today.
Yeah.
So, the camera on the trash truck, have we gotten the bill for that?
I don't think yet.
Oh.
We just didn't fix it Friday.
So, where's it gonna come from?
Uh.
The bill?
Tanner, out here, Morton, whatever name that shop is.
And Moore or something.
Top-notch tree.
Top-notch tree.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I know the streets look really good.
Yeah, uh. And yeah, uh, we got a lot extra done this year than what we did last year too, so we'll have a lot more covered this year coming. Seeing in front of C and R and Catholic Church and all that, we should be able to cover all of that.
Yeah, I know, um, Chris at Regional Planning wants to come over and hold, um. Not classes, but a meeting over here and let Roger explain to the other cities how he fixed the streets. And making them look so nice on a cheaper budget.
Yeah.
So, I thought that was kind of nice to.
Yeah.
That people are noticing and.
It's nice to be.
Recognized.
Recognize as doing something right instead of, don't do it that way.
So see, you did a good job.
Thank you.
We experienced that way though.
Yeah.
These guys be on that way, don't wanna do it again.
That's a lot other right there.
Any, any other questions for Roger?
Thank you.
I'll probably see Casey for one.
Probably in the morning.
We have a lot of meetings at Casey's. Through the window. Not really meetings, just. How's it going? All right. No one showed up to the public hearing. So.
So the public hearing is open and closed, I guess. I mean, open, no one's here to speak for or against the city applying for a grant?
Yeah, and it's my understanding that with this grant, if we're approved for it for a new police vehicle, they will pay the remaining balance from what we have budgeted to the cost of the vehicle. So we have twenty-five thousand budgeted, so they would pay anything above that for the cost of a new police truck.
And I think Ryan expected the truck to be forty-seven thousand or something like that when we priced it, so when we budgeted twenty-five.
Right, he's gonna have to get me a figure.
Figure number, yeah.
Asking for that.
That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
So that's what the it's what the grant is for. And then this resolution, she could explain.
Uh, yes, the resolution, I think I've put a copy in.
Yeah.
Your packets. Uh. The board needs to pass this resolution concerning acceptance and compliance with various requirements to obtain financial assistance from the United States of America acting through the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development. And basically, if you vote to authorize the mayor to attest, to certify all the things that are required for this grant application.
So we don't have to have a special meeting every time something needs to be approved regarding the truck?
So the certifications are to send in, you know, your standard form four twenty-four D assurances and your equal opportunity agreement and your assurance agreement, uh, miscellaneous provisions. So basically, in order to apply for the grant, like you need to pass the resolution to authorize the mayor to complete the paper.
I'll make that motion that we approve, have her, um, fill this out and and give her permission to enter this.
Okay.
So second?
Well, second.
Stacy?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, a request by the Blue Room to stay open later on Tuesday, December thirty-first. Is that something you guys normally do?
Yes, it does.
How much later is it talking?
Usually till two.
Definitely after midnight, I'm guessing.
And we concluded it in the.
Is it usually till two?
Yeah, I think it is something that. I motion.
Motion that we allow them to stay open till two, two AM on December thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay? Do we want to go ahead and do, see where else would they stay open late?
Eagles Nest.
The Blue Room and the Eagles Nest?
Yeah, any, I think we'll say any liquor establishment.
Any liquor establishment to stay open till two AM on December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you motion?
I motion.
Rick, David second.
David.
All in favor?
That'll cover everybody.
Okay. Won't have to do that again.
Until next year.
Yeah, well. Okay. I don't have, I did talk to High Hope Recycling about getting a carber trailer recycling. When they took over, is it learning communities?
Uh, community opportunities.
Community opportunities. I think it was a bigger thing than they realized.
Yeah.
They're struggling to get help and to get enough trailers to bring them, but we are on their list. So I'm gonna keep calling about every two weeks, and maybe they'll bump us to the top, so I quit calling. But they are, they do have us on their radar, and they are trying to get something down here. So I told them it doubled our trash hauling to the landfill, and they thought that sounded pretty good.
Where you gonna put it at?
Then we used to have them.
City.
Put it right after.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll need to get with DNR and find out about the clubhouse if we are gonna have to hook to city sewer. Um, we can talk to Chris and then Thursday night.
Can we do like a pump station where, where the city guys, since we already got the pump truck, that they can go out? Because they won't get used a lot.
Yeah.
And all we do is it stores it, and we can pump it out and then take it back to her.
I will bring that up with Chris. We'll see him Thursday night and see if that's.
Because I think all the lakes, the silver lakes, I think that's all their, that's the way they are set up.
But because it's a building and the public use, that's. But like I said, that's just DNR's basic rule, but we'll see if there aren't any loopholes.
Well, if a lake been there, you just can't dump it out.
No, no.
Yeah.
Um. Other than that, I don't really know anything. We've talked about it all. Do you all have anything to talk about?
On the fire department, do we need to go ahead and budget that and?
Yeah, we budgeted it, but we didn't approve the expenditure, so.
Do I go ahead and approve it, motion it?
Do we want a motion to go ahead and put the four thousand six hundred and ten dollars in for the fire department?
Yes.
So Margaret can write that check whenever it comes. Okay? Is that?
So, yeah, somebody will need to make a motion.
I'll motion it.
Rick?
Second.
David second.
Then we'll have to drag that out next month.
Yep, all in favor?
Uh.
Alrighty. And this is always the one with the most motions and seconds. Is there a motion for Ger?
Yeah, all motions for Ger.
Rick, second.
Stacy? All in favor?
All right.